Okay, welcome to the Greenfield City Council, January 20th, 2021. It's our 213th regular meeting at 7:00 PM on via WebEx. If this meeting is being recorded and videotaped by the City Council and DCTV, if any other persons are doing the same, you must notify the chairperson at this time. Anyone recording? Okay, Madam Clerk, will you do the roll?
Thank you. Counselor Jarvis?
Present.
Counselor Gwynn?
Here.
Counselor Disorder?
Present.
Counselor Bottomley?
Here.
Counselor Dolan?
Here.
Vice President Gilmore?
Here.
Counselor Wheeler?
Here.
Counselor Mayo?
Here.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Here.
Counselor Elmer?
Here.
Counselor Forgie?
Here.
President Ricketts?
Present.
Counselor Stempel? I did not notice that she was logged in yet. I will keep an eye out for Counselor Stempel logging in, but Madam President, you do have a qualm.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, so it's voluntary? I'd like to do the pledge allegiance at this time? Pledge allegiance?
The pledge of the state's health, freedom, and liberty. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its own.
Thank you. Seems very fitting today, so thank you. All right, so I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the December 11th, December 16th, 2020 City Council meetings.
So moved, Chairman.
Do I have a second?
Second, Mayo.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose? Abstain? Okay, at this time, I'd like to give the floor to Communications from the Superintendent Schools and School Committee. Welcome.
Thank you, President Ricketts, and welcome, Happy New Year to all of the City Council folks and Clerk Scott. I certainly want to start first, this is Amy, the Chair of the School Committee. Excuse me, I'd like to start first by congratulating President Ricketts and Vice President Gilmore on their new roles in the council, looking forward to working with both of you. Of course, President Ricketts and I go way back, and it's an honor to have the opportunity to serve together for this year. Just two, at this point, quick reports from the schools, and then I'm happy to take any questions. We will again return our Phase Two in-person learners to schools, just starting tomorrow, the 21st of January. This will be our second go-around with this. The Phase Two in-person learners are a specially identified group of very high-need students that really are not able to learn remotely. They may be English language learners, they may have severe learning disabilities or other impediments to learning remotely. And we are looking forward, very much looking forward, to welcoming them and the staff and teachers that work with them back tomorrow. In-person learning does take place in all of the schools. To give you a sense of how small the population is, I believe that tomorrow we'll welcome back, I want to say it's 41 students, and that's out of our district total of about 1,200 students. So it's a very small population. And then the second thing I just wanted to make sure folks knew of is our winter sports. The skills and drills for winter sports, which are just hockey and basketball, have already begun. And competitions are slated to be in for basketball on the 26th of January and for hockey on the 30th. And that, of course, all of that is, of course, making sure that there's not any additional spike in the virus numbers, and we are monitoring that closely with the Board of Health. And that's the report from the schools for tonight, but I'm happy to take certainly any questions.
Okay, so before I get ready to call on Vice President Gilmore and Counselor Mayo, I just want to let anyone who would like to speak during public comment to please sign their name and address in the chat, please. And then I'll call on you when we get to that part. Do not use the chat for anything else, okay? You'll make this an illegal meeting, so just your name and address is fine. So, Vice President Gilmore?
Yes, I wanted to ask, so now that we're going back to that, I know that, you know, there's a vaccine that's available, but isn't available to the general population yet. Do you have a competitive timeframe for bringing students back to in-person learning during this school year, or are we waiting until next fall? We haven't even discussed that. We are basically, at this point, taking it week by week. And that is the best answer I could give at this point. If we can determine and that it's potentially, we're at a point where it's safe to return, whether that is virus numbers or other protocol for COVID safety, we will attempt to do that. There are many hurdles with that. I think folks have probably heard me talk about before, the cost of transportation for our students goes up exponentially when we have to follow the capacities on buses for COVID protocol. Our buses that normally can carry 75 students can now carry 22. So the number of buses needed, if we bring everyone back, goes up over a million dollars, excuse me, which we obviously cannot afford. And then there is the just sheer physical building capacity, which there's literally no school, public school district in Massachusetts that can accommodate six feet of distance between students' desks and still have enough room. So even if we go down to three feet, we have a number of other issues that crop up, whether it's air quality overall or other capacity issues that make it nearly impossible for us to welcome all of our students back. That said, like I said, you know, just for example, we met six times in December. We've already met twice in January. We monitor everything as closely as we can to try to identify any way to bring back our students. What I would also say related to this is our educators have just done an absolutely amazing job with live remote learning. We are one of the few districts in the area that is almost exclusively live. We have more live hours of instructions than any district in the area, and we're very proud of that. And our educators have learned significant skills to be able to be effective in classroom management and curriculum. And we are just, not only are we doing the best we can, but we've been able to bring in technology and skills for educators that I think will last for quite a long time. So although no one wants to be remote, we are absolutely doing the best we can with it right now, and it is, we say this too often in education, that it's the only affordable option right now.
Thank you, it's good to know.
Yeah, thank you for the question.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Counselor Mayo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have, it's just a question, I think, to the Amy there. Amy, do you, you're not still doing tents outside, right?
No, the tents were taken down around Thanksgiving time because of the weather. The tents are not there. We own the heavy-duty picnic tables that we put under them, but we're not, right now, doing tents at all.
So everything is inside, and the students that are being taught one-to-one are inside?
The students, right now there are no students. That will start up again tomorrow. And we call that Phase Two in-person. That will all be done, yes, absolutely, inside. And we've gone through a number of different protocols for COVID safety to make sure that there's safety for our educators and the students that will be in the buildings. The biggest piece being HVAC, measurements of air quality and the air exchange rate per hour in the rooms that we're using, and meeting a certain threshold of at least four exchanges per hour in the rooms that we're using. And in some cases, that means putting in air purifiers. But all of the instruction, to answer your question, is happening inside and using all of the strictest COVID protocols.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, thanks for the question.
Thank you. Counselor Jarvis?
Hi, Amy, my name may not be that easy, or maybe. It's got a quick question, we are now in January now, has the school committee decided when they're going to go for a search for a replacement superintendent?
Great question.
That would be your answer, or the mayor's answer later, or both of you later?
No, we have, we have announced that the search has started. Member Jean Wall is going to be chairing for the school committee, chairing the search. And right now, we are in the process of actually hiring a firm to assist us with that search, which is a very common practice. And once we have that firm hired, we will go through the process of identifying a committee that will be inclusive of the public as well as the school committee and other folks that we deem important to include in that process. But it will be a fully public and transparent process.
Okay, very good. I just, you know, we're in January, we're going to be having another tough fiscal year here, so if somebody gets on board, I think the better off they're going to be and the school system's going to be.
I couldn't agree more. Thank you, thank you for the question.
Okay, thank you. Do any other counselors have a question or a comment? So I will just add that I watched... Okay, Madam Clerk, Counselor Stempel is on her way, yes?
This is Amy, I can actually see Counselor Stempel.
I just wanted to let you know that Counselor Stempel had joined, yes, had joined the meeting.
Okay, thank you so much. So I watched a recent school committee meeting, and I loved what I heard Member Karen talking about, I believe it was Member Karen, talking about how when one of the students was having a glitch with their computer or something, how other students were all like wanting to jump in to help, that collaboration and all the good work that these students are doing, even remotely, and how they're still kind of a tight-knit family, even though they're in their own homes, they're still kind of reaching out to each other. So I really loved hearing that sharing.
Absolutely, and yeah, that's another, that's another byproduct of, you know, what I would call the classroom management skills that our educators, our teachers have learned. And many of you know I have a second grader, a nine-year-old second grader, Joe, who needs quite a bit of help navigating the remote environment, and so I often sit right there with him and am able to see the interactions that they have. And, you know, it's not, it's not your typical classroom, obviously, but, you know, when the teacher is getting started in the morning, they may have their camera off and, you know, be working, the classroom is open and they are there, but the students are interacting with each other, there's a lot of conversation that goes on during those, what I would call "downtimes," at the beginning and end of the transition times into different parts of the schedule. And if that's happening in second grade, we certainly know that's going to be happening in other grades. And it's great, it's great to see, it's very different, it has taken an adjustment. But our students, as we know, kids are resilient, and they are definitely adjusting very well to this environment in many cases.
Okay.
Thank you for the comment.
Yeah, thank you very much. Okay, last call for any counselors before we move on? Okay, thank you, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. You can just say Amy, I'm fine with that. Thank you all, take care.
All right, thank you. At this time, I'd like to give the floor over to the mayor, city offices, and any employees.
All right, good evening, counselors. And following on Amy, congratulations to the new City Council leadership, Counselor Ricketts, Counselor Gilmore, and Counselor Disorder. It's a pleasure to be here tonight with you folks in the helm, and likewise, I hope to be working with you, and I actually have already engaged with a couple of you on different issues, so I'm happy to be here and, as always, a report from the city side here. I think I'd like to start with saying how successful our vaccination clinic has been. We opened it up last week. It is for first responders in Phase One and volunteers who have been extremely helpful. I have been there, I was there on day one. Chief of Staff Danny Laterno is there on every day that needs to, that she needs to be there, we are not doing it every day, but several days during the week. We have next week to go. Friday will be our last day this week. As of 6:00 PM this evening, we have vaccinated 480 of first responders. In my book, everybody who gets a vaccine in their arm is ahead of the game, and I was pleased to see so many people responding. It is an interesting environment to be in, these folks are receiving a vaccination, as we all know, going way back into childhood, a shot in the arm, but, and some are somewhat reticent about it, but they're all willing and able to be there. And I think it's just so important that our first responders, because that's why they call them first responders, they are the first people on the scene when they arrive on an ambulance call for some very, very, very sick people. And I think, I don't see Chief Strahan on here yet, but I'm sure he's going to be on because I think he has some important business ahead of you this evening. But he will tell, there he is, at least he's in my upper right-hand corner, I don't know where he is on your screen. But we have, we have some very sick people, and the ambulances have been kind of non-stop. So it's really important that our first responders, from all over the county, and I do want to stress that this vaccination effort put together by the city of Greenfield with the help of the state has been an extraordinary accomplishment for the city, and all of us should be proud of the work that they've done. That would be Chief Strahan, Health Director Jennifer Hoffman, and many of the volunteers as well, and Chief of Staff Danny Laterno, who is head of volunteers, she's sort of wrangling volunteers, that seems to have been her role, whether it's people at the door or of the City Hall or vaccination, people who are volunteering at the vaccination clinic. We've had many nurses volunteer, it's just an extraordinary effort. So I want you all to know that I am very proud of them, and I want you to be proud of them as well. We are continuing to work with Phase Two, which will be a broader and wider effort, and we are working directly with the FERCog on that. So Linda Dunlevy and I have a conference on Friday to discuss how we will roll that out, and then we will bring in the wider team, both from FERCog and the city, to figure out how to work that out. On top of that, we do have the testing clinic that's gone on, so I'm hoping that some of you have been able to take advantage of that if you felt like you needed to. I've not had an opportunity to go there, although I will tomorrow. And it's my understanding from many people that have talked to me, as well as just out in the community, that that is also working very smoothly. So I don't know about you folks, but I'm feeling very confident that we will get through this virus with people who are getting tested and people who are getting their vaccines. Phase Two opens up a much broader and wider group of people, and I think that's all to the good. On a different note, as some of you on this committee know, and all of you will soon find out, it is budget season, and I am beginning to meet this week and next week with each of the department heads on their budgets. So that's running smoothly. Certainly Liz Gilman can address both '21 and going forward, if you so choose to recognize her this evening to speak. And last but not least, and somewhat related to the vaccination piece, I will welcome Senator Joe Commerford here tomorrow, she will tour the vaccination effort at John's On, and then we will go over to the community college to see the testing effort. That is all I have for you today, I'm certainly willing to take questions from anyone on other things, if I can answer them, I will, if I can't, I will find you all the information that you need.
Any counselors at this time would like to ask a question or make a comment to the mayor?
Counselor Forgie? Mayor, I wonder if you can give us as much as you possibly can, an update on how we're doing with the fire station temporary project and also the purchase?
Oh, sure, sure, sorry about that, that's just sort of ongoing.
Yes, I understand.
That's what I, among other things, that's what I live and breathe. So, yes, so the fire station project itself, both parts of it, temporary and permanent, are moving along. Because it comes first, the temporary, we are accepting bids up until tomorrow is the last day for bids, I was explaining to President Ricketts earlier. Things I learn, and I learn daily. When you are a temporary apparatus bay vendor or a temporary, what is it, admin and dormitory vendor, neither the twain shall meet. Apparently there are two separate entities in that business, many people do apparatus bay as well, many people do the other kind, the admin and the dormitory piece well. So we have separated that out into two phases. The Phase One, I think, is the dormitory and admin piece, and we are accepting those, I could have it backwards for sure, but either way, we are accepting those, the first round of bids is due in tomorrow, we will review those. There's a small review team made up from the temporary fire station subcommittee, they will review the bids, they will open the bids, they will rate the bids, they will open the bids, and hopefully we will award them by next week. Following on, the following week is the deadline for the apparatus bay, and the same process will be followed for those. So we hope to make our awards for both of those by mid-February, and then we will begin working on it. DPW Director Marlo Werner, and he could certainly address any questions on that, has been working closely with the architect and the OPM to figure out what, well, to actually accomplish what the DPW can contribute to setting up the temporary fire stations. So they have been working closely on that, so has IT Director Fernando Flory, because as we know, we're basically creating a fire station in a temporary basis, they need all of the technology that they would have in the current fire station. So that is where we're at on the temporary, we are on schedule. I will let, I will let you know by the next meeting whether we are on budget, but I have no reason to think that we won't be with regard to those bids. And as far as the permanent goes, we are still in negotiation. A proposal, a counterproposal was presented, if I'm not mistaken, well, I'm hoping, I didn't hear any differently, was presented to the sellers today, and we will know, I hope, within the next couple of days, what that, what that brings us. So, you know, certainly until, until we resolve where the fire station is going to be, and we have every reason to believe it will be at the Main and Coombe Street lot at this point, we really can't go forward too much. They have been doing their due diligence testing there with regard to environmental pollution, while we don't have final reports on those, sort of the anecdotal, what they're seeing on the ground seems very positive, so I don't, I don't think we'll be in for any major surprises there.
Thank you. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments, Marlo, Chief Strahan, or Liz Gilman?
Is that in a general way or on the subject of the fire station? So they know.
I sort of want to, oh, well, we do have a question for Liz from Counselor Forgie, and then Counselor Gilmore, you'll be next.
I wanted to ask our Finance Director, how are we looking? I know that we're going to start digging into this whole budget season and everything else, but I'm interested in knowing how we're looking in our revenues, and I know that there has been a, I don't even know what, a cherry shoot sheet that everybody seems to be fighting over at this point. Can you just give us a little overview of, financially speaking, what the state is up to and what we're seeing in revenue collection here in Greenfield? Thank you.
Good evening, I'll start with revenues. I did send out a revenue report, and I'm actually kind of pleased at where we're at. and I'm actually kind of pleased at where we're at. I think we'll do okay this year. Yes, some things are down. But I had adjusted down quite a bit of them. Some of the things that have been down, hotel tax, parking tickets, penalties and interest, liquor licenses. Oh, sorry, not penalties and interest. That's a good one. That's a good one. But then we have some things that are already over budget, like general fund interest, the veterans' service assessments, fire miscellaneous. So one of the, and our tax, overall tax collections are doing okay. Yes, it looks like people took a little longer, but they're catching up. So the thing that will help, will determine this year really will be motor vehicle, which doesn't come out till February. But we do have our commitment, and the commitment looks okay. So as long as that's paid, our revenues will do okay. The thing that concerns me for fiscal '22 is the parking permits and parking meter revenue. That will be down, and that will impact our '22 budget probably by $200,000 is my estimate at this point. Depending on how parking tickets and surcharges go, I may have to lower that. As the mayor said, we are working on '22's budget. We will know next week. Well, maybe the end of this week. I apologize. Seven days, we should know from the governor what the first budget is. Which will be a good indication for us. Overall, the state's tax revenues are estimated for '22 at being 4% over by the state above this year. And the Taxpayers Foundation is saying 6%, but they're figuring on stimulus coming in. So I don't expect a huge increase in state aid, but I don't expect a reduction. So that's always good. So we have been conservative in our budget. And we'll see where the governor's numbers put us. And as far as our expenditures, they seem to be all on track. I'll be sending that report out probably tomorrow. You know, the only thing that might be a little tight for the year may be health insurance, but I think we'll make it. And we have room to do end-of-year transfers, likely, anyway. So overall, I'm feeling pretty good about '21. I think we did a good job. And '22, we'll know very soon. But we did take a conservative approach in giving guidance to the departments. And I think, I'm optimistic, honestly. I really think Greenfield is in a decent place.
Thank you so much for that report. Yep, Councilor Gilmore?
I actually have two questions. My first one is for Chief Strand, if he's available to answer. But I had asked about, when we first started talking about the $163,000 for the radios, I was asking about how many radios that was. I know that everyone has to get replaced, but I just thought that, you know, when residents ask about how we're spending this money, how much they were. And then my other question is for Liz Gilman, but I can wait if Chief Strand has an answer for me.
Okay. Madam President, do you want me to speak?
Yeah, I was gonna like have her just use Liz while she was still there and let her be finished up for the evening, if that's all right. Councilor Gilmore?
Yes, so for Director Gilman, I was gonna ask, I know that, you know, this year is very different from every other year. And I know that you said that you're optimistic about this. I'm curious about, and you might not have this in front of you. So if you have to send me an email, that's fine. But I'm curious, because I had read an article in Business West about the mini-grants that we had offered to local businesses to kind of keep them afloat during this time. I was wondering, who was able to use those grants? And like, you know, how many people applied for them? Who was eligible? I had one person complain to me that they were ineligible for what they felt like was an unfair reason. Do we have any information about that?
Actually, the Economic Development Office oversaw the distribution of those funds. But I can certainly get the information for you.
Okay.
They worked with the businesses. So they would have a better handle on who applied and who received the funds.
Yes, yes.
Okay, and if this has to be an email, that's fine, too. Thank you.
Thank you, yes. MJ Adams. With the GBA on there. So they both will have all that information. So, yes, Chief Strand. Okay, thank you.
Hello. Do you want to do the discussion now or later? I can go into more detail, or I could go into specifically that one question? How do you want me to handle it?
I think maybe you could answer that question now, because I think that our guests that are waiting to speak want to speak on this topic. So the information you give now will be so helpful.
Sure. So we're going with a brand-new radio system. We have to replace every single radio we have, which includes every police car, every fire truck, every ambulance, our base radios, the radios in our EOC and whatnot. So on the fire side, we are looking at 44 portable radios. If we were to purchase the radios on our own, the radio cost is $2,822 or $124,000. Our share of that is going to be $17,000 for our portable radios, to give you an idea of what we're talking about for the savings for the community. So on the fire side, there are 44 portable radios. There are 11 mobile radios, two base radios, two higher-end mobile radios that have different capacities and then the other 11. And five mobile repeaters. Our mobile repeaters are the ones that are the most expensive part of this purchase. The mobile repeater turns a truck into basically its own little tower site and takes the signal from a radio, puts it through a portable repeater, and then bounce it up to the tower. So we go from, you know, a small 5-watt radio to a 100-watt radio, which makes the world of difference. And so that's how many radios that we have on the fire side. The police side, very similar. They're looking at replacing 45 portable radios and 23 mobile radios. Again, on the police side, we're looking at another $126,000 if we were to purchase them ourselves. And our cost for the portable radios are $17,528. Did I answer the question?
Yes, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. So now, do any other councilors have any questions at this time? Okay, so for the public, you have your choice. You can speak now, I can call on you. Or would you want to wait till I open the public hearing about the radios? And not that I'm any kind of mind reader. I've been in communication with some folks, so I was knowing they were coming to speak. So I kind of gave them the rundown on, they have the three minutes to speak, and Greenfield residents first. So what would you like to do? Would you like to just go ahead now? Because I can call on Sarah Ahern.
I can go now, it doesn't matter. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, sir.
So Sarah Ahern, 237 High Street, Greenfield. Good evening, city councilors. I'd also like to take a moment to congratulate President Ricketts and Vice President Gilmore to their new roles as president and vice presidents, respectively. I look forward to your solution-oriented leadership. I'm here this evening to speak about the $163,000 free cash appropriation request to purchase police and fire radios. Before I weigh my opinion here, there are some questions that are mulling around in my mind about this particular request. My question is this. Is this a matter of urgency? Meaning, does denying this request right now place citizens in need of emergency services or direct communication between officers or firefighters in jeopardy? So that the rest of the general public would be too great? Or is it a tech overhaul? It's not a matter of for or against for me, the request, but it can be delayed while a wider net for possible funding could be sought on a state or federal level. If the answer is yes, then as a concerned constituent of Greenfield, I humbly ask, offer some suggestions of how to use this free cash. As prior winters have shown, and in more so ever in the pandemic, it is the most vulnerable among us who continue to suffer. Oftentimes, in the open elements, in bitter cold temperatures, is becoming a dangerous public health situation. As doors begin to shutter in this pandemic, my people, people in recovery, people in recovery from trauma, began seeing a rise in fatal overdoses and suicides. Might we explore using the funds to temporarily outfit the Green River School, withstand the vacant? And any repairs and supplies needed, there would be ample cash on hand. Because we are in a state of a national emergency and a state emergency due to this pandemic, we could utilize courts and the armory, because it is a, and because it is a school building, there are more than enough spaces for folks to socially distance. We could utilize entities like the Red Cross volunteers and medical reserve corps members and the general public, who stood up last time willingly to pitch in with their hearts and dollars and volunteer hours. We can further prop up the mutual aid that is ongoing all over Greenfield, such as food and basic needs, et cetera. We have a kind, caring community here, and this is the right thing to do at this time. I thank you for your consideration and look forward to hearing the dialogue at this topic. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Perfect. So Kathy Anne?
Hi, I work for the Recover Project slash the consortium and have been a peer in a woman in long-term recovery for 23 and a half years clean. I do technically live in Turner's Falls. And seeing peers amongst, even in Turner's Falls, Greenfield, et cetera, and recently attending a homeless shelter meeting, it is definitely in the need and even more. We do provide housing supports at the Recover Project and resources, places for people to go. Like, we have the living room as well. We have the RLC, we have the Sussallison, and several resources. However, when the doors close for a holiday or it's just the time to close, I personally work after hours of the Recover Project. I see people on the streets. And I appreciate the police that watch over the RP when I'm there. And in a long federal street, I see it all the time. If they see that I'm there, they stand by. And, but I also, it breaks my heart when I see those that are really struggling financially and even more because of the pandemic. So I, too, feel like, is this a priority at this moment? Versus a more where people have primary needs that are needing to be met? And even, we have some that are having trouble with electronics that even if they wanted to attend this meeting, they have no access when our doors are closed. That's one of the main things that people come in at the Recover Project. It's not just a safe place, but they really utilize what we have for electronics. But we close at 4:30. So then what do you do? And then what other else is available around? So I hope that also is considered in the budget, is how do we help people get phones and all those kind of things?
Okay, so could you go back and say your full name and address?
Sure, my name is Kathy Anne Llewellyn. And I live at 2 Key Street in Turner's Falls, Mass.
Okay, thank you. So Mackenzie Newhouse, could I have your name and address? And you may speak.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, so I'm Mackenzie Newhouse. I live at 54 Old South Street in Northampton, Mass. And I work in Greenfield. I just would like to echo the concerns that Kathy and Sarah have both shared. And I just wanted to highlight a couple ways that the $163,000 could be spent to contribute to the community's needs right now. So if we account for the average apartment rent at being about $1,000, that would pay first, last, and security deposit for 54 apartments. That could also pay 13 years of rent in a $1,000 apartment. That would also cover 2,175 rooms in the Days Inn Hotel, which is about $75 a night. That could also cover 4,000 monthly bus passes for the FRTA. We also know that there are a lot of unhoused people that we are trying to cover and house. And for those that could not be provided housing, proper winter tents are essential. That could cover roughly 200 winter tents to keep people away from the elements. And over 1,000 pairs of weatherproof boots to keep people safe when traveling, when they don't have anywhere to live. I just want to highlight the way that, you know, they both have outlined the need in the community and also echo the concerns that is this money really essential to be spent right now when we know the community is really struggling with housing and all of these other issues? So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Calvin Mohn, could you please state your name and address, please?
Yeah, actually, can I just ask about the requirement of giving you my full address? Can I just tell you the town I live in?
You could just tell me the street without the number.
You can still find me. All right, I live on Walnut Street in Brattleboro. Yep. And I am the coordinator here at the Recovery Learning Community, Wildflower Alliance, at our Greenfield Center. And, yeah, when I heard that this money for the radios was on the agenda, it just really brought to mind, we had hosted a community forum back in the summertime for the community among, you know, many different organizations, including our own. And we heard directly from the people that we're working with kind of what their priorities are. And they really wanted the city to know what it is that they need and what it is that they want to see. And so I'm really here to kind of speak to that. And some of the main priorities that were identified were having redirecting funds to substance use recovery, to peer support, to non-coercive mental health supports, and community-based violence response and prevention. And they also were identifying a need for civilian first responders for mental health, trauma-informed mental health response, peer support. And they really identified policing as not being the support that they wanted to see more funding go towards. So I just thought it was So I just thought it was important to bring that to your attention. We actually have kind of compiled a document with all of the responses that we got during that community forum, that, you know, I'd be happy to provide to the council, but I just wanted to highlight a few of those as, you know, real urgent requests, that, you know, we were talking about this back in the summer, and we're still kind of asking and putting these forward. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much, Calvin. And if you would like to forward that to our city clerk, she will make sure that it comes out to each one of us counselors. Regardless of how we may vote tonight, it's still information that we can take in and have, so I thank you in advance.
Thanks.
Thank you. So at this time, is there any more public comment? Okay, at 7:50, I would like to open the public hearing and second reading. So, from Ways and Means, would someone like to read that?
Penny is not smooth. She'll get better, but she's definitely...
Madam President, I would be happy to read.
Thank you.
I'll get off after this one.
Are there... Hang on just a second, please. Okay, I need everyone muted right now, except for Councilor Forgie. Thank you. I'm sorry. No, take your time, and if any other councillor has that at their fingertips and wants to help out, that would be great.
It is on page 28 of the packet.
Got it, thank you.
Take your time.
Do I need to read the public hearing notice?
Councilor Forgie, you need to read the public hearing notice and the second reading.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Public hearing. In accordance with Home Rule Charter, the Greenfield City Council will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, January 20, 2021, at 7:00 PM at John's On Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street, or via WebEx if required, and then the WebEx address is given, to receive public input on the following: Appropriate $163,000 from free cash to purchase radios for the Fire and Police Department. The City Council may consider the same on Wednesday, January 20, 2021, at 7:00 PM at John's On Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street, or via WebEx if required. Materials can be obtained from the City Clerk's office, 14 Court Square, from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, or phone 413-772-1555, extension 6163. Ashley Stempel Ray, Greenfield City Council President, asterix, and the asterix then says, "This public hearing was published before Councilor Penny Ricketts was voted in as Greenfield City Council President at the organizational meeting held on January 4, 2021. City Council's second reading, January 20, 2021, approximate $163,000 from free cash to purchase radios for the Fire and Police Department." Thank you. Thank you. So for that, is there any questions at all from councillors? Because Chief Strand is still here, and I see a couple firefighters, so councillor Mayo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This question is for the fire chief. Hello, fire chief.
Good.
How are you?
Good.
So, how old are the radios that we're replacing, or we're looking at replacing?
Great question. Let me give you a quick rundown on this whole project, so I think the public could get a better understanding of what we're trying to accomplish here. I also know that Chief Hague is on. I also have the union president from the firefighters is on the meeting, as well as my technical guy for the radios, should there be any technical questions for the radios. Let me first start off by saying what the radio system is. The radio system that we currently operate for police and fire are part of a countywide system. It is not a Greenfield-specific system, it is part of a bigger picture, with every public safety agency, police, fire, and ambulance in the county. Several years ago, probably five-plus years ago, it was identified that our system that we have in the county, which is a UHF system on the 450-megahertz band, is failing. They are computer-driven, they are 15-plus years old, and that the system was failing on its last legs. And so as a county, many, many years and many, many hours were put in to identify what is the best approach to protect our first responders with communications. As you know, radio communication is absolutely one of the top priorities in public safety. If you read any lighted-duty deaths on the fireside, the one contributing factor that is always there is communication. We have to have robust and redundant and adequate communication. Our radios that we purchased for the fire department, and I believe this is the case for the police department as well, were purchased over 15 years ago when Christine Forgie was mayor, and Jarvis was a captain, I believe he might have been even a firefighter, that applied for a grant and received the grant to purchase these radios. There has been no significant upgrade since we purchased it through the grants many, many years ago. So fast forward to our current condition, our system is failing, and to redo our system as a county, we were looking in the excess of $15 million-plus to redo the countywide radio system. So we went to the state, and we went to our legislators, and for many, many times, and we asked for help. And the help that the state came back and said, "We have this 800-megahertz system that is statewide, that the infrastructure is already there, and with some tweaking and with some work, we can take Franklin County aboard with them. We'll be in company with Worcester County, we'll be in company with Barnstable County, we'll be with state police, we'll be with other state agencies, all on this statewide system." In order to get us over there, the state has come forward with a pot of money to actually buy the hardware, the actual radios, and that's what we're talking about tonight. And so they have contributed a tremendous amount of money. As a matter of fact, it's over $322,000 from state money for us to get on the system. The reason why we need the $162,000 that we're asking for is because they gave us $163,000 that we're asking for, they gave us enough money to buy the entry-level radios, not necessarily the radios that we need for our departments, and it didn't include any of the accessories that go along with it. So, for example, on the fireside, we have microphones that attach to the radios. Our microphones are fire-rated microphones at $372 apiece. Now that sounds like a lot of money. The reason why they're that much money is because these radios are specially designed to be used with a firefighter glove, they are waterproof, and they are heat-resistant. Now think about that for a second, right? Heat-resistant, we don't want our radios melting in a fire, so that's why we get the higher-end equipment. That alone for microphones on the fireside accounts for $16,000. The biggest expense, like I explained earlier, were the mobile repeaters to make this whole system work. That is $62,000 on the fireside, and the fireside is $115,000 out of this request. It is absolutely critical, absolutely critical, that we replace our radio system. And whether we do it tonight, or whether we do it from year, is going to be a matter of $162,000 or 1.5-plus million dollars, because this discount that we're receiving from the state is good till July 1. Now, I would have planned better for this in last year's capital if I knew that it was coming this quick. And every town in Franklin County is in the same boat. We would have planned better if we knew that it was coming this quick. But after we had submitted our capital, which remember, I've already submitted capital for next year two months ago. So the timing is a little bit of a challenge, but they came out and they said, "You know what? We finally got the money, we're running forward, we've got the infrastructure built out, we've got everything ready to go, we're going to help you get the radios, but the additions to that is on the communities to get." So we're getting on a brand-new radio system that is absolutely critical for our firefighters. Remember, our radio system is failing. Over the last six months, we've had two critical failures at two different radio sites. We have three radio sites within the community, two of them had failed. We've got them back up and running with shoestring and duct tape, but they're up and running right now, but we don't know how long they're going to last. The simple answer is this is absolutely critical purchase at a very, very, very cost-savings amount to the community. I understand $163,000 is a lot of money, but it's small in comparison to what we could spend if we're on our own to do this a year from now.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So councillor Forgie, and then councillor Jarvis. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. I also want to let the council know that last night at the Ways and Means Committee, we voted a positive unanimous recommendation out to council.
Okay, right. Councillor Jarvis.
Sorry, Penny, I was trying to hit the mute button. I just got a question. Should I speak on this now, or should we bring it to the table? I don't really have a question for Bob, so that was my question.
No, okay, why don't you just hold it, and then we'll do the motions, orders, and resolutions?
Gotcha. That's what I thought I had.
Perfect. Well, thank you. Do I have any other councillors who have a question? Yes, councillor Gilmore.
I have a question for Chief Strand. I know that you're talking about these failures with the radios, and if you could explain this to me, as someone who's never worked as a firefighter and doesn't understand that system, I know that your firefighters have been working harder in the last several years than you ever have before, and I'm worried about what this means for public safety in Greenfield. So can you kind of talk about these radio failures and how that impacts the calls and how they've gone up recently?
Sure. I'll be happy to answer that, to the best of my knowledge, but I have my radio tech on with me tonight, and it might be more appropriate if he could address what the failures were and what the failures mean to our overall safety in regards to coverage for the community, if the council would like, and allow me to do that.
Actually, that might answer my question better, thank you.
Lieutenant Seaman, are you on?
I am here, can you hear me? Excellent. Okay, to answer the councillor's question, so to give you the brief overview, it's a three-site system, it's three sites to receive, one site is transmit. So Great Hill up on the mountain is a transmit and receive site, Poet's Seat is a receive site, and Adams Hill is a receive site. So Poet's Seat about three years ago took a near-field lightning strike, and because of lack of grounding on a particular piece of equipment, actually fried equipment, starting at the top of the rack where that piece was, and going cascading downwards, essentially muted some of the receivers that are up there. So I consider that to be half a site at the moment. It works, but it's not working the way it's supposed to. Last week, the microwave between Great Hill, the big mountain that you can see as you drive down Main Street, you see the towers up off the distance there, that is Great Hill, that is the main site for the entire county. The microwave between there and Adams Hill failed, and so that site is currently off, and we are awaiting replacement parts for that. So it's a complicated system. The one specific to Greenfield is a relatively simple system, but it is running on antiquated parts. It is based on a, let's see, it's about 15 years old, and it's based on 30-year-old technology. So we've reached our time limit with what we have, if that answers your question.
So if I could jump in here, and again, I just want to really highlight the importance of what I'm going to say. The system that we are on, we have a dedicated part of an overall system that is the Greenfield frequency, okay? We are part of a bigger system, which is the county system, and every single city and town in Franklin County is going through these same discussions that we're going through right now, because we're all in the same boat with this, but we're all going, we're all moving forward with going to this system. We're going to go from a countywide system to a statewide system that is owned and operated by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, but it gives us more robust capabilities than we currently have. So our system's failing, we're going to a new system, and the state's helping pay 3/4 of the cost for us to get there. So I just wanted to highlight that one more time.
Thank you. Okay, Mayor Whedon Gardner, did you want to speak?
I did, as soon as I got off mute. I just, I want to acknowledge the people from the public who spoke so eloquently about the needs in the recovery community and our unhoused community. And I hear you, I know your issues, and I want you to know that we are, as a city, going to work on as many of them as we can. The Office of Community Development does indeed work on these one step at a time. We do have the center on, the warming, the overnight shelter on Wells Street, we did facilitate the living room on High Street as a warming center. It is unfortunately one step at a time with the money that we have available to do it, but I do hear you, and I do well understand your issues, and I'm open to listening further and discussing it with you at any point in time, and I do just want you to know that your comments tonight did not go unheard.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I do not want to disrespect or disregard Police Chief Hague, and if you were there, did you want to speak at all, or the Chief Strand cover it?
Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, yeah, I think Chief Strand's pretty much covered it for me. Again, I do stress the financial savings on what's going to become a very immediate problem, because we do have an unknown timeline here, and all we do know is that it's going to be very, very expensive if we have to repair something and not take advantage of this offer and this potential to get onto the state system. I think we really need to take advantage of this now, because I do not see this opportunity coming again.
Thank you, Chief. Councillor Gwynn.
Thank you, President Ricketts. I just want, councillor Gilmore asked a question about the public safety element of how the failures in the communication system might be, you know, affecting that for security of our people. You know what people are thinking if our system is down? Is it causing any immediate problems? And I don't think we addressed that. We talked about it aging, but I don't know if we know, is there immediate concern with that failure?
Sure, I'll be happy to answer that. So we have seen some diminished capabilities with, when we lost the Rocky Mountain site, we definitely see diminished capacity when we see the Adams Road site, and what that means is that, you know, certain areas in town, the radios don't work. Sometimes they're scratchy, sometimes they don't work at all. A better example of that... A better example of that, which is a potential of what could happen is, like I said, we are part of a county site, a county system. And the town of Montague operates parallel to us with, with, with the system. One of the, the pieces of equipment that Kurt was telling you about that failed was the Montague repeater. And currently is still down. And so in the Patch area and Avenue Way, they have to go to another regional tower besides their own, which is built in redundancy within the system because their system, that part, they can't get parts for, and so it's offline. And so eventually, we have redundancy in our system right now. But eventually that's going to disappear. And so they rely on what we call the Shelburne Tower or the Toby Tower down in Sunderland. If one of those fails and they lose all radio communications over there, that could easily happen to us if we lose one of the three towers permanently. And it means the difference between dispatch being able to call a fire engine out on the road and not. And so we know, everybody should know with their cell phones, you can't rely on cell phones, right? It's got to be direct communication. And so, yes, the simple answer is, is that what could happen and what has happened is we lose radio communication, which gives me incredible heartburn when that happens. Because imagine going to a fire and the firefighters in a building can't call out to get help. They need the repeaters, they need the infrastructure to call from that portable inside to the people outside. And if we lose that, simply calling from inside to outside the building, we may not get it. It's absolutely critical in our life, in our line of work. And, and, and you know, there was, there was some, some suggestions, which is a great suggestion, about, you know, the wired system coming in. The reality is, is, is that although that improves communications ability, there is not a public safety radio frequency that ever recommends being tied into a wired type system. It has to be wireless and it has to be radio to radio. The radios that we get are military grade. They're, they, they can hold up to all weather, heat conditions and things like that. And, and, and you know, outside of the infrastructure, our portable radios, our mobile radios that are 15-plus years old, we're starting to see failures of those. Kurt told me, I think it's at least six of them that have been taken out of service in the last year that need to be replaced just because they age and we keep, they're not replacing parts and, and, and things like that. So I hope I answered the question for you, Counselor.
Thank you so much, Chief. Counselor Gilmore, you have another question?
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry, I know I already asked. I think this might be a better question for Kurt Seaman though. My understanding is that the county is moving forward with these changes with or without us and that there is a timeframe. I can't recall what that timeframe is. So when do we have to have these technological upgrades all set by?
To the best of my knowledge, what I'm understanding is the timeline with the state is they are setting aside the money, they're appropriating the money by, I want to say it's the end of this month. And they are hoping to have it expended by the end of this fiscal year. I don't know if the chief has any updated timeline other than that.
I do.
I believe it needs to be expended by the end of this fiscal.
I do. So the infrastructure is already in place. The state has already built the infrastructure. What we're talking about is the hardware for Greenfield Fire and Greenfield Police to operate on the system. The real issue here is, is the cost. July 1, after July 1, the discounts go away. So the state share of $322,000 goes away. And then if we purchase the radios at that point, we're going to be purchasing full, full price. So the $126,000, $24,000 for portable radios for the fire department that we're buying for $17,000 right now, we'd have to, I'd have to come back to you and ask you for $124,000 just for portable radios alone for the fireside after July 1.
So President Ricketts, if you don't mind, I think that they were, they were trying to answer my question and they were focusing more on the fiscal side. But what I was asking is, my understanding is that the county is moving forward with this infrastructure with or without us and that we need to be on the same page with the county so that we have this network. Am I, do I understand that incorrectly?
So, so the short answer is, we don't want to be on an island when it comes to communications for emergency services. So you're absolutely right. The county is moving forward with or without us on this. The complication that's going to arise if we're not a part of that, then how do we talk to our mutual aid partners when we go out of town and when they come into town? If they're not on the same radio system? So that's a tremendous challenge in itself. But you're, the simple answer is yes, the county is moving forward. They are going to the, they call it the commerce system, the state system. They're going with or without us. And, and if we go something different than that, then we're going to be on an island. And it's one thing that we decided 15-plus years ago that wasn't beneficial for the city of Greenfield to do their own thing when it comes to communications.
Thank you. That's, that's what I was asking.
Okay, so Kelvin, I can recognize you as long as this is something totally new because everyone was still on that's on now. So who would you like to direct your question to?
Thanks, I appreciate that. Yeah, the question is really just about.
You have to put your name and address in the box again. This is a public hearing. This isn't public comment. Well, welcome to democracy. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, my thought?
Yes. And who would you like to direct this to?
Um, I guess to the, to the council. Like I'm assuming that you have seen a breakdown of the police budget. And I mean, my question is really just why this wasn't budgeted for in the police budget, which, you know, I don't even know the size of it. I'm still learning about this city that I work in. Why it's coming from this other free cash area? Like, seems like their budget would be able to accommodate the equipment that they need. That's all.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mowen. Chief Hague, were you able to hear that question?
I did. It's the same answer that the fire chief had. Again, this is, this is a countywide project. We, we opted in because it's fiscally responsible, but it's also emergency necessary. And again, we, we didn't have the ability to know what we needed prior to this fiscal year. And no, my budget can't support this. This was never part of my budget to begin with. Again, we got these, these, these numbers and these requests during this fiscal year and basically saying, we need this done by July 1 or you lose the opportunity to have these savings. So it wasn't something that we planned for either.
Okay. Thank you so much. So now at 8:17, I don't see any more questions from counselors. I would like to close this public hearing. And I thank all of you who spoke. Okay, we're moving on to motions, orders and resolutions. Counselor Forgy and members of the Ways and Means, could you please read and take care of the first item? I might have shifted too fast, so take your time. Counselor Forgy, you're still muted.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Thank you. All right. Order number fiscal year 20-042. City Council order, City of Greenfield, Mass. The city council, upon recommendation of Mayor Whedon Gardner, an order to appropriate $163,000 for fire and police radio, radios. Ordered that the sum of $163,000 to be appropriated from free cash for the purpose of purchasing radios for the police and fire departments.
Second, oh, oh. Are you, are you done?
Okay. Who seconded that?
I did.
Is that you, Councilor Mayo, that seconded the motion?
Yes, but I, did I do it too early?
It's, it's fine. So there's a second. Okay. So we're gonna, we're gonna vote for this? Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call vote?
Yes, ma'am. Did you want to allow for discussion of the committee, of the council?
Yeah, yeah, let's hear the feedback. I was at that meeting and I think Counselor Jarvis definitely wanted to speak during this part.
Thank you, Penny.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, yeah, Chief Strand was right. It was 15 years ago. I was a private, it was an FDA grant through Homeland Security, believe it or not, right after 9/11. I just, I just want counselors to realize that, 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 that the main reason at 9/11 why we lost, lost extra people probably, one of the main contributing factors was interoperability. If we lack interoperability with the other departments that we're, that we're working with, i.e. the police, the state police, any other county or state agency, it leaves us way in the dark. And as, as Chief said, nothing gives him heartburn more than not having communications. I remember years ago when I started with the fire department, there was three or four portable radios. And our, and our, and our communication was hand signals out the window if you could see the pump operator or another officer. And believe me, some of the hand signals were not, not appropriate. Well, they probably were appropriate at the time, but. And, and it just, it gave me nightmares as, as, when, when our radios were breaking down and we had to replace them and there wasn't, but there was money in our budget, but we had to take it out of different parts of our budget to replace radios. And radios and protective gear are number one priority for the fire department. And, and believe me, when, when you lose communication with somebody and you can't get them, it's not a good feeling as, as being the boss outside or being the guy inside that needs immediate help. Or there's, or there's another danger that you're not seeing and another department, another agency can't get ahold of the other bosses to tell them, hey, get your guys out of there. Bad things are going to happen. So we really need to think about it. I know things are tough. I know we're in the middle of a pandemic. I know people's budgets are hurting, people are hurting. But we really need to take care of our first responders and make them, and, and provide them with the safest environment that we can provide them. They both, the police, fire, EMS, they do dangerous jobs. And the better the tools, the more up-to-date tools that we can give them to work with, to put in their toolboxes, to keep us safe and to keep themselves safe. I, I hope everybody backs this. Thank you.
Thank you. So it's going to be Counselor Dolan, then Counselor Elmer.
Thank you. I have a couple of things I want to say, so I'll try to keep it organized and concise. I want to start by saying I, I absolutely agree with what members of the public have said. I understand that this is an opportunity for Greenfield to get these radios. I also want to recognize that if it was the kind of priority that we've heard described, it really should have appeared in the capital budget and also in the five-year capital plan. In my time on the council, I have never seen a single dollar appropriated for housing homelessness or addiction services, which are our most pressing public safety needs. And the fact is, in my mind, we have more people dying from a lack of housing than dying from a lack of radios at this point. So I, I really do want to recognize what, what those folks said. I also want to mention that, like, this community pretty much failed to have a meaningful conversation about what public safety means, like a lot of other communities did over the summer. We had 2,000 people in the street asking us to have that conversation. The ball on it? Moving back to this issue though, the unfortunate reality is that we, just because we vote down this set of radios, doesn't mean that that money will go in any of those other public safety directions. We have the opportunity to get the state to pay for a big part of this. I do believe that it's going to be more expensive if we do it later on. And for that reason, I will vote for it. But it does make me wonder though, on the state level, why we always see these incentives and grants for things like this? We did the same thing for police body cameras a few years ago. And we never see a similar kind of funding coming to us for really taking care of the most vulnerable people in our community. So that's something that's really not in our control as a city, but it is immensely frustrating as a leader. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dolan. Counselor Elmer, and then Counselor DeSoraya.
I will vote for this because it feels like a wise investment in the infrastructure of our town and for our first responders. 70% of this is for the fire, 30% for police. There's always, whenever you're spending money, you can always come up with a better way to, another place to put it. But since the state is putting up most of the money and we're going to get something good out of it, I, I'm intending to vote for it. I do hear what, what the citizens are saying. And I, I'm, I'm surprised to hear that we never ask for money for homeless and shelter and food because I do believe we do ask for that kind of money from the state. But I'm happy to be corrected. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor DeSoraya.
Thank you. Thank you. I too will be supporting this because it's needed and we're getting such a large part of it as part of a grant. But I too was at many of the public forums and gatherings where we spoke about spending money for public safety on social service programs. And I think that with what we had in free cash and listening to the people that spoke tonight, I hope that, that, the, I believe it was Kelvin that spoke, that was going to put those needs in writing to the mayor, that we might see something from that of how we might be spending some of our free cash additionally towards the needs of those who are our most vulnerable. I know that we spent over $100,000 finishing up Well Street. But obviously, listening to everyone tonight, there are many more needs and they are much more difficult, made more difficult because of the pandemic. So I, I just would say to our executive leadership that we will be looking, I would be looking forward to hearing how we might be spending some of our free cash on some of the needs that came up tonight. But I will be voting in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Stimple Ray.
Are you muted?
And this is a public meeting, so I would like everyone to put themselves on mute unless you're speaking from the council floor. And I would like everyone to watch their language as well. Thank you. Counselor Stimple. Counselor Stimple, you're still on mute. There you go.
Okay.
I can't hear Counselor Stempel. Can anyone hear?
I, I cannot either.
Okay.
Okay, Counselor Stempel. Let me go to the next person and then I'll come back to Counselor Stempel. So I believe it's the mayor.
That wasn't me, I think it was Dan Gwynn.
Oh, Dan, are you, oh, you're in as Town of Greenfield in your name. Okay.
Yes.
Okay. So Counselor Gwynn, thank you.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate some of the things that were just said by several councilors. First of all, I think at this time, given the amount of money that the state's willing to put behind this project, it is a fiscally responsible time to do this. Counselor Dolan was also correct in saying, if for some reason this was to be voted down, it doesn't mean that money would be allocated to any other project because we take them on as they come forward. So it doesn't mean if this was to be voted down, we could move that money to another place. It would have to go through the same process. And third, I just think I would never want to be responsible to vote down something that is so direct to the public safety of our citizens and our first responders. Under no situation in everything I've ever done, if someone brings you the answer, you can't call it an accident if something happens. It's called negligence. So I would not be wanting to be responsible for a catastrophe where we lose communication at one of our housing units in Greenfield, one of our senior housings, and we could go on and on and on. Because we knew there was a problem, we had an opportunity to fix it at a price that was not great, but much cheaper than we ever could. And it would satisfy what our residents need and not put any of our first responders in any jeopardy. And for that reason, I will vote 100% to put this through this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gwynn. I would like to go back to Counselor Stempel Ray and see if we're able to hear her. Ashley, can you hear me?
I do see that she has bandwidth issues, so she may be without audio and not know it.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna go to Counselor Mayo and then I'm gonna try to go back. Okay?
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to, I wanted to basically echo what Counselor Dolan had said. I had spent, as some, some of you may have known, I have spent 40 years in human services and certainly see the, the problems that, that were discussed by the public each and every day. Well, not the last couple of days because I've had a dead battery, but I do see it in driving around, when I'm able to drive around, I certainly see some of the issues that are, that were talked, talked about. And I, I certainly think that they are high priority. And it's, it's something that we have talked about, especially, you know, when we had the campers on the common, we talked about it. We didn't, then it just kind of dropped off the, the, the scale, so to speak. And we had other fish to fry, so to speak, other emergencies. But, so I just want to feel, I just want to tell the, the people who spoke that I understand and empathize with the situation. But I also empathize and we cannot have a, a non-working radio situation in our, in our emergency, the fire department, police department, and that's just unattainable, unattainable. I would like to have an, another discussion at another time about coming up with, with funds or seeing what kind of funds, because even Liz said that we're, we're on target, we're doing fine. The Town of Greenfield is doing fine. I'd like to see what kinds of funds are available to talk, to deal with the issues that were, were discussed with, with housing and, and that kind of issue, because that is very important as well. But it, it does not trump public safety. And I believe I'm going to vote for public safety and then have a public, and then go after whatever kind of money that we can for housing. Because I think there is money to be had there. It's just, just finding out which well it's in. So, that, I will be voting for public safety tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And I'm, I'm just gonna hold on a moment to see, oh, Counselor Gilmore, would you like to speak?
May I test my, my, can people hear me now?
We could hear you.
Great, may I speak?
Yes, please. Counselor Stempel Ray, you're in.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just had to reboot the meeting. So I, I just wanted to quickly say that I will be supporting the radio systems tonight. As a communications professional, I know that the breakdown of communication is a detriment, whether it's public safety, whether it's a community forum, communication's really important. So I will be supporting this tonight. I don't think it can go without being funded. I've sat on the council for the five years that we've been discussing the need for this. And the fact that now there is a match for it, I think the time strike the iron wall is hot. But I did want to say, and I agree with the mayor's statements earlier, that I acknowledge and hear loud and clear the comments made by our community members tonight. And I agree with Counselor Mayo that perhaps hearing, hearing more about these needs, I just want you folks to understand, it's tough for us to have this come before us, minutes before a vote, where we've had the information about this vote for the radios before. And then hearing your needs now, it puts us in a really tricky situation. And so I agree with the mayor that we need to continue the conversation. And I want to hear those needs specifically, whether that's in an email, whether it's a letter, whether it's a separate meeting. I know that CRE will be looking into things like this, Sarah. And so maybe this is something that we bring to CRE this year, not even this year, maybe this month. And so we can continue that conversation, because I think we need to look at it a whole picture, not, not saying, let's not fund this to fund this, where, you know yourself, it's more complicated than that. And so that's my wish as someone who's sitting on CRE this year, and I know that Counselor Wheeler's sitting on CRE. And I know that the mayor seems ready to do something as well, so let's get that done, all right? But I will be funding this piece tonight and looking forward to working on the issues that you brought forth tonight, either this month or sooner than that, or, or whenever that works for you all, okay?
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments from councilors? So I do want to say that they reached out to me, so I was anticipating them coming tonight. I did offer to try to sit down with them, or to sit down with them and both our chiefs, and I wanted to hear more. And I was hoping that we were gonna get the information prior to this meeting, so we would all be able to read it. So I'm glad to know that they're still willing to send it to us. Yes, you were heard. Like our mayor said, that's really important piece to please take away from this tonight, no matter what, is yes, you were heard. This is the council and this is the executive side. And it's also both of our chiefs who are there for everyone in the community and are there for you. I know I've seen them, you know, do great work when you had the 5K run for the recovery project. And I know that the fire department was there with you, with radios, with walkie-talkies, and part of that for the fundraising effort. And so I know that we can work together and keep this dialogue open. So I just want to thank you for coming tonight. I will be supporting this. I did attend the Ways and Means meeting, which was something else I also offered for you to come to, so that you would hear all the reasoning behind this. This decision's not made lightly, it's made with lots of facts. So, before we take a roll call vote, Counselor Forgie, could you one more time let us know how your, or how the committee voted for this?
Yes, Madam President, we met last evening at Ways and Means and we discussed this matter. And I am reporting that we voted a unanimous positive recommendation out to the floor of council.
Thank you. So at this time, I would like to take the roll call vote. Madam Clerk, when you have a moment.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel Ray?
Yes.
Would the president like to vote?
I would, and I would vote yes.
It's a unanimous vote by the council.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for all that thoughtful discussion. At this time, Counselor Gwynn, could you read the second part of the motions and resolutions?
Sure, I move that the Greenfield City Council pursuant to Charter Section 2-10 affirms the following appointment by the mayor to the planning board as a full member, Mark Maloney, for a term to expire June 30th, 2021.
So moved, Jarvis. Second, Mayo.
So.
Counselor Ricketts, let me give you a little bit of explanation and the vote of the committee.
Perfect.
If you see the term is expiring June 30th of this year, this is to move him from the temporary position as an alternate, moving into the full position for the term that he's replacing. It was a positive unanimous recommendation to affirm the mayor's recommendation.
Thank you. Are there any comments? Okay. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All opposed? Abstentions? It passes unanimously.
President Ricketts?
Yes, would you like a roll call?
I, I would, because I was only able to hear three councilors vote. I know it's time-consuming, but it's clearer. Thank you. Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley? Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel Ray?
Yes.
Would the president like to vote?
Yes, and yes.
It's a unanimous recommendation. Thank you all.
Thank you. Counselor Gwynn, could you continue?
I move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council pursuant to Charter Section 2-10 affirms the following appointments by the mayor to the local cultural council. John Lunt, term expires December 31st, 2022. Linda McInerney, term expires December 31st, 2023. And Andrew Nyswander, term expires December 31st, 2023.
Second, Mayo.
Okay, do I have any discussion?
Counselor Ricketts, let me just say that, uh, let me just say that the, once again, this was a positive unanimous recommendation to affirm the mayor's recommendations.
Thank you. No comment? Could I have a roll call vote?
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel Ray?
Yes.
Would the president like to vote?
Yes, and yes.
Thank you. It's a unanimous positive vote.
Counselor Gwynn, could you continue, please?
I move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council pursuant to Charter Section 2-10 affirms the following appointment by the mayor to the retirement board, Mary Ann Fisk, for a term to expire December 31st, 2022.
Second, Mayo.
Okay, and how was that vote, Counselor Gwynn?
Once again, this was a positive unanimous recommendation to affirm the mayor's recommendation and appointment. It was noted at that meeting that this person worked within our government in a similar capacity and would be a great asset to this role as a new appointment to the mayor's committees.
Thank you. Any comments? Okay, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor, Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel Ray?
Yes.
The president wish to vote?
Yes, and yes.
A unanimous positive vote.
Thank you. So, do I have a motion to take from the table? Oh, this is counsel. The non-binding resolution to begin construction of the temporary fire station without further delay?
President Ricketts, this needs a motion to take from the table?
Right.
I'll move it.
I make that motion. Mayo?
Mayo made the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second. Elmer?
Second by Elmer? Okay, so we all need a roll call vote?
Counselor Jarvis?
No.
Counselor Gwynn?
No.
Counselor Disorder? Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
No.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counsel, Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgy?
No.
Counselor Stempel Ray?
No.
Does the President wish to vote?
Um, yes, I will vote and I think I'm going to say no right now.
Okay. One, two, three, five, six, seven. Uh, the motion comes off the table with a majority of seven yes.
Okay.
So the motion for the resolution is now on the table.
Okay, so discussion? Okay, Counselor Mayo?
Hello, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I believe this is my resolution. Um, and it, in my mind, it just makes sense because it's what we're doing anyway. We're, we're building, uh, we're, we're building the temporary, uh, fire station first. And that's, and that's exactly what the resolution says. Um, so I, I don't understand, uh, well, I mean, in my mind, um, excuse me, my, my mic just dropped here. Um, so in my mind, the, uh, it just makes sense that, um, uh, because that we're, because we're doing it anyway, a yes vote is, is what's called for. Um, it, you know, we're not doing it any other way, we just heard it, we just heard again confirmed tonight that the temporary fire department is being built first, which is what the resolution is asking for.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Stempel Ray?
That's exactly why I won't be supporting this tonight. I think it's redundant, I understand that the spirit of it, and I appreciate that from Counselor Mayo. Um, I just don't want to be in the habit of voting, uh, the allocation and appropriation of $6 million for a project and then having to back it up with a resolution.
Thank you, um, Counselor Gwynn?
I agree with Counselor Stempel, uh, 100%, I don't have to say anymore.
Okay. Counselor Forgy?
I move the question.
Okay. All right.
The question needs a second?
Yeah, do I, do I hear a second from anyone?
Again.
Second from Counselor Stempel Ray?
And the question needs to be voted on.
Okay, right, there's no, I was just, I was saying, all right, there's no comments, not debatable, roll call vote, please.
Counselor Jarvis?
No.
Counselor Gwynn?
Point of order.
Okay.
We're, we're, we're voting on the, we're voting on, on the, not the vote on the question, we're voting to vote the question.
Question itself, we took it off the table, that's all.
You're voting to call the question.
That's correct. Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor, Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgy?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel Ray?
Yes.
Does the President wish to vote?
Yes, and yes.
The motion to call the question passes. Would you like me to call the, um, call the roll for the resolution, President Ricketts?
Right, so could you tell everyone exactly what they're voting for?
This is a vote on the resolution as proposed on page 41 in the packet. Counselor Jarvis?
No.
Counselor Gwynn?
No.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
No.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
No.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
No.
Counselor Forgy?
No.
Counselor Stempel Ray?
No.
Does the President wish to vote?
Yes, and no.
One second, please. Five yes. Eight no. The motion fails.
Thank you. So, do I have a motion to take from the table? FY 21-041, Amendments to the Zoning Ordinance Relative to Low-Impact Development, LID. Techniques include amendment to Section 6.11, driveways and entrances of the zoning ordinance.
So moved Dolan.
Second, Gilmore?
Okay. Is there any discussion? Who best wants to speak to this? Is this Counselor Dolan?
President Ricketts?
Yep, sorry.
We need, we need to vote to take it from the table, please.
Sorry, yep, roll call vote, I can remember that piece.
Counselor Jarvis?
No.
Counselor Gwynn?
Um, I was saying.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley? Counselor Bottomley? Counselor Bottomley? You are on mute.
Oops, sorry, yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgy?
Yes.
President Stempel Ray?
Uh, yes.
Does the President wish to vote?
Yes, and yes.
The motion is taken from the table, motion 21-041 is now on the table.
Do we have discussion?
President Ricketts, would you like a report from committee?
Please.
Um, so this, uh, this set of amendments for low-impact development received a positive unanimous recommendation as amended, um, with, as it is with a few amendments from EDC, and also a positive unanimous recommendation with a few amendments from the Planning Board.
Thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions for Counselor Dolan or any comments? Counselor Gilmore?
I would appreciate a brief recap.
Okay. Counselor Dolan, would you?
Happy to give that recap. Um, basically, low-impact development, uh, this is just a set of standards that integrates, um, new building materials and building, uh, techniques to kind of, um, have less of an environmental impact on the landscape. So rain gardens and that kind of thing are examples of, um, of low-impact development. Planning Board put a lot of work into this, excuse me. The, uh, amendments which I'll make here in a minute come from the Tree Committee, so this was a really good example of working with community partners to get their input. And then, um, both committees thought that their input, that their, um, most of their suggestions were really good, and we both decided to integrate them. So if I may, um, I would like to make an amendment, uh, to integrate the amendments, um, recommended by the Planning Board, which have been sent out to the council in addition to the one amendment that's reflected on page, uh, excuse me, 53, I believe, that came from an EDC.
Point of order, amendments should be read aloud.
I, I can read those amendments if you'd like.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Just as a part of the record, thank you.
Yep, starting with the amendments that came from the Tree Committee. So replace where soil conditions allow with where there are well-draining soils. Replace vegetation planted within stormwater management features with trees and shrubs planted within stormwater management features. Replace three-inch diameter caliper at 1.6 inches above the ground with three-inch diameter caliper at 1.4 and 1/2 feet above the ground. Add the words 10-foot landscaped buffer strip, including shade trees, to 10-foot landscaped buffer strip, including shade trees, from the large trees 40 feet to 80 feet category of the list of approved trees. Replace three-inch diameter caliper at 1.6 inches above the ground with three-inch diameter caliper at 1.4 and 1/2 feet above the ground on page three. I'm sorry, the first four weren't on page two. And again, on page three, replace, all trees must be listed on the Approved Tree Species List of Chapter 400 of the Greenfield Code. Large canopy trees are preferred for internal landscaping to provide maximum shading with, all shade trees must be listed under the large trees 40 to 80 feet category of the Approved Tree Species List of Chapter 400 of the Greenfield Code. Large canopy trees are required for internal landscaping to provide maximum shading. And a final amendment, which is on page 56 of the packet, to the, um, Section 200-4.14D, uses permitted, add, um, a fourth bullet point, detached three-family dwelling with a minimum lot size of 100,000 square feet. And just as a rationale, that last one closes a loophole, uh, that came up when we added the definition of three-family dwelling to the zoning ordinance. So that's a technicality.
Second, Wheeler?
Okay, amendments been made, seconded. Now, could we have a vote, a roll call vote on that? Hold on one second. Counselor Gilmore?
I have a, I have a question about the amendments, because I didn't get a chance to review, um, the EDC meeting. So these amendments all came from the, the Tree Committee?
With the exception of the last one, which came from EDC.
Okay, so are these more about, um, the environmental impacts then? Like, if I could just get like a two-minute rationale for the amendments, that's all I want.
My understanding is that the language that they suggested is clearer because they are tree experts and they know how tree experts describe these things. I think they, it's really just cleanup, they, they helped us clean up the language.
Okay, that's all I need, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments? Okay, are we ready to vote at this time? Okay, roll call vote?
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler? Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgy?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel Ray?
Yes.
Does the President wish to vote?
Yes, and yes.
The motion to amend passes unanimously.
Okay. Are we all set on that?
We need to vote the main motion as amended, please. Would you like me to take the roll call now, President Ricketts?
Yes, no one has any other questions, correct? Please, roll call.
Thank you. Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor, Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgy?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel Ray?
Yes.
Does the President wish to vote?
Yes, and yes.
The zoning amendment as proposed and amended passes unanimously.
Okay. Presentation of petitions and civil papers? Seeing none, do I have a report of any of the committees? Okay. Seeing none, unfinished business? Old business? Counselor Gwynn?
Um, I just wanted to quickly just make a point on old business that, um, I know we thanked the, uh, and congratulated the incoming, uh, president and vice president to the council. I would just like to thank outgoing president and vice president for an outstanding year, uh, in supporting the committees, and I appreciate all their work. I just didn't want to lose that in the, um, transition of, uh, authority. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, I agree. Any other old business? So, new business? Um, yes, at this time, Madam Clerk, I would like to dedicate a page in the minutes to Peter Miller, please, our historian. Um, he's touched many lives, and I think it's just important to note him. So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay. Do I have any other new business?
I just have a, a quick comment, um. I, we, we've had a lot of pandemic conversation, um, related to the coronavirus. And I wanted to also acknowledge that we're in the middle of a secondary crisis of mental health. Um, it's really near my heart to take any moment I can to remind folks, um, that we do have a great resource in the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline. Or just to remind folks, if there's anyone listening tonight, suicide is temporary. It's a, it's a moment in your life. Um, if you're able to break away, find someone to talk to, take a breath, uh, go for a walk, call this number. Um, I'm actually gonna take a moment just to share my screen briefly so I can share the phone number, so that everyone can see it, um, share it widely. It's preventable, and with isolation and everything else that folks are going through right now, the mental health crisis is not being talked about enough. Um, it's not shameful to be depressed. So I just, I just want to draw some attention to that there and use this platform that we have here, uh, to speak it loud and clear. So thank you for the opportunity, um, and I ask my colleagues to please, there's no stigma around seeking mental health guidance. I have a therapist, and I'm so grateful to have one. Mental health is just as important as any other type of health that you could have. Thank you.
Same. Yep, thank you. Thank you so much. It's very important. Any, anyone else for new business? Okay. So the first reading? Would you like to do that, Counselor Forgie? Yep. City Council First Reading, January twentieth, twenty twenty-one. Appropriate sixty-five thousand nine hundred dollars from free cash for the Phase B one Main Street Improvement Project. Appropriate thirty-three thousand dollars from free cash for the SCBA Fire Department SCBA Gear Grant Match. Okay. And the second First Reading, um, Counselor Dolan? Notice of zoning amendment proposals?
Yes, um, how would you like to do this? This is a new practice. I'm not sure that we've actually done it before.
Okay.
Just read, read on page eighty-one. Is that sufficient?
Right, is that what you would like, um, Madam Clerk, or you, were you, um, going to table this or anything to the spring, or you're moving ahead with this? What?
Madam President?
Yes.
If someone were to read what was on the agenda, page two, under notice of zoning amendment proposals, that would be sufficient.
Okay. Did you, did you want to do that?
If I may, uh, it may be more appropriate for Counselor Disorder to read these.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Disorder, are you? Let me get to page two.
I believe it's on eight, page eighty-one.
Right.
Both page two and eighty-one are the same information. Hold on.
Nope, take, take your time. Notice of zoning amended, amendment proposals, January twentieth, twenty-one. The following zoning amendment proposals have been submitted to the Greenfield City Council for consideration. Amendments to chapter two hundred zoning, section four point two, rural residential, RC, subsection uses permitted by special permit by striking limited to tier one, five thousand square feet. From paragraph nineteen, to read as follows. Nineteen, marijuana cultivator pursuant to two hundred seven point one seven, and by adding new paragraph twenty-one, to read as follows. Marijuana product manufacturing and marijuana retailer as accessory, accessory uses for the use marijuana cultivator pursuant to two hundred dash seven point one seven. Submitted January third, two thousand twenty-one by Counselor Timothy Dolan. Amendment to chapter two hundred zoning, section four point two, rural residential, RC, subsection C, uses permitted by special permit by making subsections nineteen and twenty in their entirety and replace with a new subsection nineteen as follows. Marijuana cultivator pursuant to two hundred dash seven point one seven, provided that any structure erected for such use in the RC zoning district must also be usable either for other agricultural use such as hoop hoop houses, greenhouses, and barns, or for residential use. Submitted December thirtieth, twenty twenty by Greenfield Greenery LLC. Thank you very much. Any motions for reconsideration? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moves Gilmore.
No, no seconds?
Second, Jarvis.
We can stay here longer if you want, guys.
Yeah. Roll call vote quickly, please.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler? Counselor Wheeler? I think he may have logged off.
Smart man.
Counselor Mayo? He may have also logged off. Um, Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel Ray?
Yes.
Does the President wish to vote?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Good night, everyone.
It's adjourned.